Yeah, they're all for. They're all for that motion. Stacy did have a spoken.
Yeah.
She wasn't sure, so I just checked.
One, yeah, one of them is. One of them is for Stacy.
No, but then, who isn't that?
Uh, the one in the middle.
No, I just asked them, they're all for.
Uh, she told me, she, she is.
Meeting called to order, please. Uh, tonight, we're very lucky that we have students from the Daily School joining us as part of their Civic Engagement Week, so I would like to invite those three students, please come inside the chamber and help us start the Salute to the Flag. You can start. You can start.
Legion to the flag in the United States of America. Republic, we stand one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, justice, and...
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, can we give them a round of applause? It sometimes can be intimidating to come out here in public on television.
Great, great job, and great call, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing our students that opportunity, so thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. Delay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Here.
Seven present.
Three minutes, need a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of February 23rd, 2022, and the special and regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Low School Committee of March 2nd, 2022, and to place them on file by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Del Rossi. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. For permission to enter. I believe 4.1 and 4.2 are the same. Going to ask Dr. Hall to explain the vote on the NRT contract. Uh, the superintendent to Dr. Hall, please.
Yes, Mayor, you're correct. Um, if permission, within permission to enter, one, there are two options, so choosing one of those options or motioning to accept that package with option one or two would negate the need to address permission to enter number two. And one of those options, as the committee may recall, is a million dollars cheaper approximately than the other one.
Need a motion to approve permission to enter by Ms. Del Rossi, second by Ms. Thompson. Any comments?
If I, if I could just stress, Mayor, just option number one or option number two has to be part of the motion in regards to NRT Bus, Inc. And again, that dealt with option number one, didn't have, had the requirement that forty certain percentages paid even if service isn't rendered. And option two didn't have that requirement, but it was a million dollars more over the term of the contract.
Any comments or questions? Uh, here none, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Well, just as much, I love the students being...
I want a quick clarifying question. So, in that vote, we voted for the permission to enter, so that represents option one, Mr. Hall?
Um, in the permission to enter packet, and I probably didn't explain it well enough, there's two options under permission to enter number one, so the committee would have to pick either option one or two within the first permission to enter with NRT.
So then, if I made a motion now to accept option number one?
Yes.
That would be helpful to you?
That would be great, thanks.
So moved.
So, and then, that's the one that we had the, the roll call vote on?
I think we need a roll call.
We need a roll call on that.
Yeah, we need a roll call on that.
Okay, alright, so move, and then, roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Okay, and we just discussed 4.2 as part of that discussion. So, we now move to the motions, and as I was saying, I would love to have the students in the audience to watch us meet all night, but you have school tomorrow, so I'm asking for a member to make a motion to move up. They're here to speak on, I believe, on motion number 5.6 and 5.10. Um, so a motion to move those two items up by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Thompson, on favor say aye. The motion is approved. I think one of you is speaking on Ms. Thompson's motion, is that correct? Okay, go with motion 5.6 first. On 5.10? Okay. I just, I thought I, somebody was, somebody speaking on the racism earlier? So you are speaking on Ms. Thompson. Okay, I love such as, um, so motion 5.6 by Stacy Thompson, motion for the superintendent to supply the school committee with a typical timeframe from the opening of a discrimination, racism, bullying, or intimidation complaint until the investigation is open. This will be able to include what it means to have an investigation open. Additionally, who gets involved at both a school and administration level? Second by Mr. Dakota, we have a registered speaker. Uh, please state your name, and please give us your statement.
Hello, I am Julie Oom, an eighth grade student from the Daily Middle School.
Andy, could you help her with the microphone?
Hello, I am Julie Oom, an eighth grade student from the Daily Middle School. With the four years I've been at the school, it's, it is extremely heartbreaking to see that racism is still here and alive at my school. As a woman of color, I have dealt with and seen racism firsthand, with non-people of color using offensive slurs towards communities, saying racist comments, but making an excuse saying that it's just a joke, and other forms of discrimination and microaggression on the school grounds. From a student's perspective of racism, I think we have done better over the years on tackling racism, but I fear that it will never be eradicated. There is more, a lot more that we can do as students and staff together to prevent discrimination in low public schools. Students are afraid to report instances of racism and discrimination because they have seen a resurgence after a short period of time and are afraid to be bullied or discriminated against further, even after reporting it. The proposed motion would provide students with a sense of security just by knowing that any sort of racist, xenophobic, or discrimination of any sort will be handled with a swift action universally. Throughout the district, this will be a step in the right direction for all schools here in our diverse community of Lowell. Racism should be effectively and universally be dealt with across the district, and everyone should be treated equally within the school system. Getting a student's opinion and perspective on topics like racism can better and inform a safer and nurturing school environment for all students in Lowell. I appreciate you all listening to my opinion on racism in schools, thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for coming to speak today. It takes a lot, and, um, I don't know if I was that articulate at that age, so I appreciate that. Um, though I, I think I'm pretty articulate now, but, um, you know, the reality of it is, is there's a lot going on in these schools, and I have to say, in the past few weeks, I've gotten more phone calls than I was even prepared for, especially since they saw these few motions. Um, my intention with this particular motion is to, you know, there's a system that's set in place in order to capture incidences of discrimination, racism, bullying, intimidation, but the process, what is the process? How long does it take? If I put in an incident, what happens? Um, what I will tell you is that many people that have been speaking to me say that they become an investigation and then nothing happens. And so, for me, that was a huge concern. So I want to make sure to have a firm understanding for the entirety of the school committee, as well as the public, and definitely, most importantly, our students, so they have an understanding about what happens when an investigation is open, um, who gets involved in that process, and then where it goes from there. So that is the reason why I made this motion.
Any other comments? Mr. Ferrera?
Uh, thank you to our speaker, it was a very good speech. Uh, and I think, uh, and also thank you to Ms. Thompson for this motion, it's a very good motion. I think our speaker hit, uh, hit the issue like perfectly. Um, students are hit with slurs and racial comments and just told that it's just a joke, and then they tend to just, uh, like, they try to ignore it or are fearful to report it because they feel as if nothing would happen. And as she said, it's gotten better over the years, but there's always going to be more to do. This motion is just another step in the right direction to support our students who go through these incidents. Um, and it, as she said, well, it provides students with a sense of security. Um, and unfortunately, I'm really sad to hear that this, like, is district-wide issue. It's happening in the middle schools, and it's happened in the high schools, and it's been an issue for years. So, uh, I really hope this motion is accepted tonight in order to move another step in the direct, right direction and continue the progress that we've made over the last couple of years.
Thank you, any other comments? Here none, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. We now, we'll go to motion 5.10. Ms. Connie Mon requests the administration provide an update on the implementation of the Airmark reporting portal and a sample of what the committee can expect to receive in terms of feedback on complaint resolution, second by Ms. Dory. Ms. Mon?
If we'd like to have the speakers go first on this one too, that would be fine with me.
Absolutely. What, uh, could you read the speaker, Madam Secretary?
M. Chabonier?
Hello, I'm Melanie Chabonier. I am an eighth grader from the Daily Middle School. I am here today speaking on behalf of the Daily School students on the topic of school lunches. We have been interviewing students, cafeteria staff, and school department officials to find out their concerns, and I'd like to share them with you. To begin, students have been complaining about the freshness and quality of the food served. We have experienced still bread, bread with mold, soggy foods, pancakes that are hard, rotten eggs, oranges with green mold, overcooked food, undercooked food, and macaroni and cheese that sticks to the container even when turned upside down. The meat we eat is usually frozen food that is being reheated instead of freshly cooked. Frozen foods are also processed, which is less nutritious than fresh foods. We interview, we interviewed our cafeteria worker, and she told us that twenty, twenty years ago, she used to be able to cook fresh, on-site meals. But today, she mostly just reheats frozen processed foods. She wishes, she wishes she was able to cook more often. Another concern is that sometimes the food served seems unsanitary or unhealthy. A student had a bug in her salad, someone else found a hair, another student had a bone in her chicken patty, expired milk, sometimes the food is even undercooked. This is probably because lunchtime are only fourteen minutes, and the cafeteria workers have to rush to cook meals for a quick turnaround. Many menu items are repeated, and students wish there were more variety. We are served chicken patties, hamburgers, and pizza all the time, and we wish there were more options. We had a Korean beef bowl option recently, and had, and that was popular. But there aren't enough proportions to guarantee there will be enough of that option for the last kid at the end of the line. If the popular item runs out, the students are left with repetitive chicken tenders or ham sandwich. We advocate for there to be more student voices in deciding which items will go on the menu and in selecting what we are likely to eat in advance so that Airmark can prepare enough proportions of popular items so that students have enough chance, have the chance to eat them. We also do not get a lot of time, we also do not have a lot of time to eat our lunch. We have fourteen minutes in the cafeteria to line up, get our lunch, sit down, and eat it. This is very short, and if you are at the end of the line, you might only have ten minutes to eat. This leads to students rushing and wasting food if they didn't have time to finish. Overall, I am here to ask that the quality of lunches be improved by allotting more money in the budget to buy fresh, not frozen meat, hiring enough employees to cook food, fresh food, increasing student involvement in the menu planning, and having people come in and check foods for quality control more regularly. It would also be nice if lunchtime was increased to twenty minutes so students can relax and eat without running out of time. Thank you for listening.
Hello, I'm Lidian Lung, and I am an eighth grader from the Daily Middle School, and I'm here to talk on behalf of the students and how the lunches are being served. My class has been working on a civics project for a month and a half, and we are focused on improving school lunches. We choose this, we chose this topic because we interviewed over one hundred fifty school committee members, and many listed the issue of school lunches as a high concern. We interviewed a cafeteria worker, Mr. Skinner, Jim Hall, Airmark official Alyssa Spooner Gomez, and Connie Martin, and they all support us in our work. My classmate Melanie has explained the problems we have experienced with school lunches, and I would like to share our ideas, how these problems can be improved. First, we learned that there is a way for students to give feedback using an email form. However, this email form is not easy to find. You need to know how to, how to find the nutrition information section on the LPS website, and then where to look for the email link. We would request that LPS, what, LPS do more to advertise the, this email, this email of, oh my God, I'm sorry, option, by promoting it more often on the LPS homepage, by, by putting a direct link on the homepage, by sending flyers home to students and families to inform them it exists, by promoting it more regularly on LPS social media, and by hanging posters in school, in the school cafeteria showing how it can, to locate the link. Second, we want everyone to consider that, that one of the best form, forms of evidence, forms of evidence to show concerns with school lunches is to take a photo or video. However, students are not allowed to use their phones or cameras in school, so there is no way for us to collect this photographical evidence. Also, we are not supposed to bring food outside of the cafeteria, so we aren't able to bring it to our teachers to photograph either. Since, since we can't take photos to show you, we would, we would like to encourage school committee members to come eat lunch with us once in a while, so you can, so you can talk to students and see what they're being served. We learned from Ms. Martin that such visits must be arranged with the superintendent first, but we think it would be great if each school committee member visited at least one, one school this spring to sit and have lunch with students and get their feedback and share in their experience. Lastly, we ju, we just became aware that Airmark hosts a monthly school lunch committee event where LPS families can, can come in for an hour, an hour one night a month and taste, and taste future menu items and give suggestions about the menu offerings. This is, this is a great idea, but I don't think people know it exists. Alyssa Spooner Gomez told us that only two families registered to attend the meeting this month. This shows that the event needs more advertising. We need, we asked the school department to promote this opportunity more by advertising it more frequently on social media, sending flyers home two, two weeks in advance of the meeting, hanging flyers in cafeteria, and perhaps even creating, even creating news, news is rele, release about the event and the memos that school, schools send home. Now that we found, found out, now that we found out schools can host a lunch committee meeting, we will, we will be having the April meeting at the Daily and encouraging our classmates to attend. We, we hope that our message will be heard and that some changes can be made to, to how feedback is shared by advertising the feedback portal, making it more accessible by having lunch with us, and by promoting the school lunch committee meetings more frequently. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much to our representatives from the Daily. Um, I enjoyed a really challenging conversation with this group of students who are, um, have made this their, their civics project. Um, and I think it was, uh, for me, it was a great experience. I think for most of us, we haven't had an opportunity to be in schools lately, uh, and it's really been great to kind of get these invitations to go and get a chance to interact with students. And this really was a very, very impressive group who, as I say, asked very direct and challenging questions about, um, the food we're providing through our, our vendor, Airmark. I think, you know, again, some of the, the ideas that are brought up here, I think, give us some real opportunities to institute some change. And, you know, I think I have a fairly good understanding of some of the challenges that are in front of us in wanting to improve these offerings. Um, but I certainly think that, you know, A, the idea that certainly this group of students, and I suspect many others, are looking for ways to have their voices heard. We do need to be better promoting all of the different communication venues that we've created. to be better promoting all of the different communication venues that we've created. So that includes our, the scheduled meetings, which again, I found out the day before too. And then, anything we can do, A, to improve the accessibility of this portal, and, and really be able to promote it. We have a fairly active social media presence for the Lowell Public Schools. I think that's a great way for us to be able to promote this and be able to get that out into the public so they're aware of how they can effectively share their concerns around food offerings. I think one really interesting idea is this idea of being able to have students order beforehand. I mean, I think we're, we live in a world now where we're all, you know, grub hubbing and, and everything else, students would be able to make those choices the day before so that, you know, your cafeteria staff could be better prepared to, to provide what the students really want. And I do think, you know, there are concerns around the, the way food is being prepared, the way, you know, and also the, the kind of incoming quality of the food. Those are things that, as I shared with, with these students, at the end of the day will always come down to money. And there's a lot of tap dancing and a lot of other things that go around this, but the fact of the matter is, is that if we want to see better food quality and better food preparation at our schools, I think we need to be prepared to spend more money on it. And I think that this is a timeframe where we're going to be entering into budget season. I do know that in the past committee did make a move to increase the, the per person amount that we're spending. I think that's something that I'd like this committee to be able to consider. We do have a revolving account, so I know that it's somewhat different than some of our other budget, budget-based decisions. But I would put that forward, hoping that my colleagues would join me in wanting to have that as one of the things we get to consider during our, during our budget deliberations as to how we can make our investment clear in wanting to improve the quality. And then I think it really is a matter of us being able to track, I mean, kind of going back to the actual motion, being able to track what's being done over time so that Airmark, they've been a longtime vendor, we want to be able to track their response so that it's something that we can be accountable for and they can be accountable for. And I think we're all certainly, you know, we all want the same thing. The vendor wants the same thing, the, this committee, families and students want the same thing. We want to do whatever we can to improve the, the lunch experience. So I would just put that forth, hoping for my colleagues' support, and once again, thanking our representatives here from the Daily School who again, have made a very impressive showing and they, and their compatriots at the Daily, I think are getting a great deal out of their civics programming, and I for one am inspired by it. Thank you.
Any other comment? Mr. Ferreira?
Thank you to our speakers. Those are both some really good speeches. I really liked the emphasis on the accessibility of the feedback portal. I just went to the Lowell Public Schools website and I was just staring at the homepage and I like looked everywhere and could not find anything regarding food and nutrition unless I actually Googled Lowell Public Schools food reporting, which brought me to the food and nutrition page. And then from there, I have to click the link and then I can email regarding, or email the proper people to regarding our food. And there's also a really good point made, this pertains to the middle school and this isn't something I experienced at the high school because I'm allowed to use my phone. Students at the middle school aren't necessarily reporting as they should be able to because they don't have the access to their phones in order to, they have access to adults or teachers who are able to report for them or take the pictures needed. So I think that's a problem that needs to be addressed. There probably should be greater emphasis in the middle schools to streamline the reporting that they are unable to do. Also, making the event between, I think it's Airmark and Lowell Public Schools, the eating event, where families come in, test out the foods, broadcasting that more to our community, also very beneficial. And overall, I think the suggestions made by our speakers have just been beneficial and as Ms. Martin said, it's something that all of us are trying to work for.
Any other comment? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say that the, the student representative here that speak, even though you're from the, the Daily School, but I think you speak on behalf of many students in the Lowell Public School. So, speaking of visiting the Daily School and having lunch, that is part of my plan. I have gone to visit some schools with my colleague, Mr. Dakota, and we have some good experience and I will take your offer to go have lunch at the Daily School, so that would be my next stop. So I appreciate it, I will take the offer. Thank you.
Good comments, good motion. All in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. I want to thank the students for coming tonight and I want to thank the teachers, Mr. Green, Ms. Miranda, and the parents in the audience, the teachers, a great way to teach the students civic engagement. And on behalf of the superintendent, the administration, all the school committee members, we thank you so much for bringing students here tonight. Thank you. We'll now go back to the beginning of the motion agenda. That will be five point one. Motion, Mr. Lay requests the superintendent provide a status update on translation services for fiscal year twenty-two and an analysis of the level of services required within the FY twenty-three budget to ensure equitable language, language access for all LPS families, second by Mr. Dakota. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself that I just want to know what the, the update is about the language and, and translations in Lowell Public School. Thank you.
All in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. Five point two. Mr. Dakota and Mr. Lay request the superintendent explore a funding mechanism to allocate up to three hundred dollars in additional flexible spending for each LPS teacher to purchase classroom supplies prior to the start of the school year to be included as part of, part of the FY twenty-three budget. Mr. Dakota or Mr. Lay? Anyone? Mr. Dakota?
As we all know then, and we hear all of these stories over and over again, that so many faculty members typically will go out at the beginning of school in August or just before school opens and they start buying a whole bunch of wonderful items that they really need in their classroom. And wouldn't it be nice if we were able to defray some of that cost that they incur every year for our kids? Thank you.
Any other comment? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, especially the teacher, especially the lower-grade teachers, they spend a lot of their own money, they have been spending a lot of their own money to buy stickers, whatnot, to, to, for, for their students. So I want to recognize that by finding some way whether we can give them some incentive so that they, help them to relieve the financial, that way they don't have to spend too much of their own money. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
I remember at one point we did get, I believe it was two hundred and fifty dollars to spend on supplies at the beginning of the year. So I don't know what happened with that, but I think that's maybe something that, and I think it was all through like Lakeshore was the name of the place and they had tons of supplies. That's it.
Mr. Ferreira?
Yeah, this is a great motion, you know, one thing I noticed is that each and every one of my teachers seemed to care about their like job very greatly to the point where, as they said, they're taking their own money and investing it into their classrooms, into their students that they love to teach. I hear stories about teachers having to go on websites like Donors Choose, Choose and Such in order to find donations rather than, find donations in order to get the things they need for their classroom. And I think this sort of fund would just be a great thing.
All in favor say aye. Did you want to make comment? No? I thought somebody raised their hand. All in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. Five point three. Mr. Dakota requests a meeting of the Arts and Athletics Subcommittee to discuss the citywide mural project being coordinated by Project Learn and opportunities for involvement of Lowell Public School, Lowell Public School, second by Ms. Thompson, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr., excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that any opportunity we can provide our students who are interested in perhaps an art field project, I think this would provide them with a great opportunity to, to show off some of their skills and, and give them an opportunity to express themselves in a, in a controlled environment, as it were. So I think it would be a good thing for our kids to pursue this and it would be good for the city. Thank you.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. The motion is carry. Motion five point four. Ms. Dory requests the superintendent provide information on Family Resource Center regarding the vendor, scope, timeline, and process for the third part FRC audit. Also, put a school assignment update report of February tenth. Please provide details on the timeline regarding the ninety-six K through twelve students in the FRC category, including date of registration initiated, date attending school, and reasons not enroll and/or attending, second by Ms. Mon. Ms. Dory?
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, I think we have those answers in our packet and it, I did request it three different times starting February second, so I'm wondering if my colleagues would enable us to just discuss the reports that we have in the packet and I would withdraw this motion because we have the reports here, but I do have a couple of quick questions about the reports. Is that okay to just?
Absolutely, please.
It's at the end of the agenda, so to just move it up.
Sure.
So the first one regarding the Family Resource Center audit. Do we need to?
Go ahead.
Okay. As we all know, we approved this last year, well, the, the new members weren't here, regarding making sure that we're doing, being as efficient in providing the best customer service to our families. So it is very important. One of the concerns I had, which I, I'm much more comfortable with now that we have the information about the vendor that was selected, they seem to be pretty comprehensive in their understanding of education and organization, so I'm comfortable about what they're going to be able to provide for us. The timeline always was tight and I'm just trying to get a sense now, according to the report, the contract was sent to the vendor for signatures March ninth and Tuesday, March eighth, they agreed to begin the work. So has the work begun? Because when we look later on in the document with the break line, the breakdown of the work plan, I saw it like later in March date. So through you, Your Honor, to the superintendent, can you tell me if the audit has begun and when, when did we actually begin?
Mr. Superintendent?
Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Mayor, school committee members, so we did begin on that Tuesday, March eighth. We did put a, a small P O into place to start the work pending the final signatures.
So we are also in the process of enrolling for pre-K right now, right? And I noticed in your report, you mentioned the other really critical deadline is going to be the enrollment that happens in May. So the plan is to do this under a very tight schedule while the staff are also trying to register students. Correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Any, like I, I noticed with the, when we talked about the, we approved the final spending on January nineteen, it was sent to the solicitor's office that day, you got it back February seventeen. Why did it take two weeks from the solicitor's approval to March nine to get the vendor on board? Because we could have started two weeks earlier, right? Was there a, a reason that it was delayed, that additional two weeks?
So the legal counsel of the vendor had requested some change in language, so then we had to wait for that change in language to be reviewed.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think it's, that's the challenge when you're under a really tight deadline. And my last note on this, it looks like it's going to be comprehensive, we will get a report, a copy of the final report, because I think this may impact some of the budget decisions going forward in terms of the Family Resource Center, so that's why there is a lot of interest. And the other report had to do with the follow-up on the student assignment where we were given numbers and I just had some questions. And I think it would be helpful going forward if we do have this sense of when do the students initially enroll and then what's the timeline? I was relieved to see that there were only a few outliers, because I had heard there were some from October, but you have one from October, so I'm on, for my colleagues who, the student assignment follow-up report. And again, I think that it sounds like it's a very cumbersome process because it's not, like on the top of page two, you mentioned the spreadsheet that was created for the week of February tenth was inadvertently deleted and since the data is not automatically generated and stored, I'm hoping that once we get this audit done, that we will have come up with a system because that manual, it's taking a lot of time out of our staff and especially where it does change every day, right? New people are enrolling, we're going to be getting new people all the time. So I, I would be really looking forward to getting more information from the audit that we can actually use and improve the process. So our staff aren't inundated, doing things manually, and we're able to provide the really turnaround time to our families. And I know the bilingual family liaisons have been huge in being able to make those calls to homes and, and that's why Mr. Lay's motion about translation services will also be helpful as we try to improve the service we provide our families in the Family Resource Center. Thank you, thank you for these reports and thank you for the time.
So you are, the, provide later.
Yes, you can.
You are withdrawing.
We got the information. I, I just, you know, I, as you know, Your Honor, I had asked at three separate meetings for the information and then I just decided to put it as a motion and, but my ultimate goal was to get the information. Thank you for that.
Motion five point five. Request the superintendent explore and report back to the committee the possibility of instituting paraprofessional behavior specialist roles with certification and additional training, compensation through the Lowell Academy, second by Mr. Rossi. Ms. Dory?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I, like Ms. Del Rossi, I have a memory, a vague memory that we had something like this in the past, and I don't know how far back it goes, maybe Ms. Martin, as the historian in the group, might know, but I'm sure, even, even if we don't, or if you don't have a memory of, or able to find it, Dr. Boyd, perhaps we can create this idea. Take a paraprofessional who has shown promise and interest in improving their skill set, provide the training through our own Lowell Teachers Academy to give them the skills to help as a behavior specialist, because again, we're looking at the mental health issues facing our students which are often connected to behavior issues. And you know, one disruptive child can disrupt the whole classroom, so I'm looking for recommendations from the administration around this idea and maybe they have something else in mind, but the idea of, it also gives a career growth path for our paraprofessionals. Get this certification training, you'll be paid more, you'll be more valuable to the, your school community by being able to help us with the behaviors that our, the behaviors our students struggle with. I think it could be very helpful on the front lines. So I just would like that considered. Thank you.
Any other comment? Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much. Well, I failed the history portion of our meeting tonight. That's more than I can handle. But I do want to say, I mean, this is exactly the kind of dynamic that we want to have in place where we're investing in our staff, investing in their credentialing, and, and being able to then reap the benefit of having that kind of increased diversity, increased talent within our own, within our own ranks. I would say to, if Ms. Dory would be amenable, I think it would be useful for us to put this forth in a motion that has a budget priority as part of it. That what we'd want to be getting back is not only that we'd want to institute this, but what the cost would be so that as, again, we go into budget season, we can kind of look at all the different things we want to be investing in, have those numbers in place so we can... things we want to be investing in, have those numbers in place, so we can make those decisions as we go forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. That would be a great addition to the motion.
Okay. So that's just part of the report, not making, you're not asking her to amend the motion, but ask that to be part of the report?
Include that that be part of the report, a budget, a budget.
The budget implications.
Okay. If no other comments on favor say aye opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We already did 5.6. We now move to 5.7. Ms. Thompson, Ms. Thompson motion to have an appropriate representative, UTL, or HR, give a presentation to the school committee around the processes for equitable and diverse hiring processes in the district to include what has already been done and is enacted, successes, and timelines moving forward. Additionally, the size of the team working toward this specific initiative would be identified for the committee, second by Mr. Dakota. Ms. Thompson?
I have, it's really important to make sure that we don't just bring up the importance of diversity hiring without knowing what's happening behind the scenes. And so this motion was really created to give us a glimpse of what is happening. So kind of towards Ms. Martin's point, when we moving, where we're making budgetary decisions moving forward, we have an idea of what we're doing. I do understand that it's a pledge of the UTL to really move forward with diversity hires, and I know also the, the HR department is also looking toward doing that. But I have no idea what size of the team is, what the scope of the work is, or what's actually been done thus far. So I think that bringing this back to us would, would give us some more information to move forward.
No other comments on favor say aye opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. 5.8, Ms. Thompson, motion to have a compilation of enrichment programs currently staffed and operational, as well as a listing of scholarship opportunities supplied to the school committee as they serve to bridge the socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic diversity gaps. These opportunities should be clearly identifiable for students at all three district schooling levels, second by Ms. Doherty. Ms. Thompson?
This, this motion is really about equity and moving forward with equity. I think it's a shame that there are unfortunately people that don't know about enrichment programs. They don't know about scholarship opportunities moving forward. So the same people are applying for things and getting assistance that maybe other people might need to know about, and/or could just make for a fuller experience in the educational journey that people have. I don't know which programs. I have heard that some have closed down. It might be due to staffing. And so I would love to know that information. But towards Ms. Phillips gave a really comprehensive look, or a glimpse at what was happening in our schools as far as areas where, you know, some of our student populations, in particular, the Latinx population numbers jumped out to me, that are missing, or have these gaps. So we want to make sure that we're looking at how to provide information, so that all the way through our school journey, people are getting enrichment opportunities.
Any other comments on favor say aye opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. 5.9, Ms. Thompson, motion to open dialogue with city council in their effort to design and install signage at school playgrounds and city parks to provide for equitable experiences for neurodiverse and nonverbal youth, second by Mr. Rossi. Ms. Thompson?
Man, I've had a lot to say today, huh? This motion actually was a motion made after having viewed one of the city council meetings where Councilor Drinkwater proposed something very similar. And I think that it's important that we make sure to look at areas where we can work with the city council to get things done. We have an array of neurodiverse students, or nonverbal students, that really would need something like this in order to have a full experience in, on the playground. Maybe, you know, having something that maps out, I need to use the bathroom, and they're nonverbal. So these types of things are used in other districts, and I think it would be an advantage to make it a little bit more equitable for those students as well.
Any comments? Ms. Doherty?
Actually, I think that's a great idea, and I think that we could target the schools that have those populations of students. We're not talking about signage all over the city necessarily, but to really be sensitive to where those populations are and what their needs are. If I could, I have another comment, though.
Sure, absolutely.
On a separate issue. I just realized when Ms. Thompson was speaking that I had a third motion that is not on the agenda tonight, and it is time-sensitive, because it has to do, it has budget implications. I'm, I know I emailed it to Dr. Boyd, and you got a copy as well, Your Honor, regarding furniture. Remember that one?
You're making a motion.
I would ask for, to make a, to.
And add a motion.
To make a motion from the floor, because I don't want to delay getting this in the queue where it is going to have.
Second by Ms. Mon. Ms. Doherty?
Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So it's not a complicated one, and I just, like, jotted down. I don't have the perfect wording, because it's in my head. But my motion was to request the superintendent provide us with a report on the furniture needs across the district, with priority given to safety first, older schools second, and fairness. You know, we talk about, we can't give everybody a brand-new school like the Stoklosa. Many of our children are, and our staff are in older schools, but we can make sure that they have safe furniture, you know, tables that aren't with metal sticking out. I would also look at the lockers. I've seen some lockers in pretty tough shape. And as we're assessing what our building needs are, I would want to be looking at this issue as well, the furniture, in terms of what would be the cost. So I would ask that that be sent to the facility subcommittee, so we can review it. But kind of an assessment by school of what their furniture needs are by those priorities, safety, older schools, and fairness.
All right. Let me just backtrack a little bit. Going back, then I'll get back to your motion, going back to Ms. Thompson's motion. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. So we didn't finish off before we got to Ms. Doherty's motion on the floor, which was second by Ms. Mon, and your motion was second by Mr. Dakota. And now we can discuss, and you finished discussing your motion. Any comments on Ms. Doherty's motion on the floor? On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We finished them all.
Now she wants to refer it to the facility subcommittee.
Well, did you want to refer that to the?
I, I have it.
Facilities, yes.
I have it.
You want to conclude that original motion to refer it to the?
Yes.
Facility Subcommittee. Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yeah.
We finished 510 already. We now go to six subcommittees. 6.1 Finance Subcommittee, report of the meeting of Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had to schedule, schedule a few times. The Finance Subcommittee was initially scheduled for February 17. The items on the agenda includes current school year budget, upcoming school year budget, and bottled water information. I had to reschedule this meeting, because the city, the city solicitor wanted to attend, to discuss about bottled water information, and she was unable to attend on the day that we scheduled. So we postponed to February 23rd. Again, the city solicitor was unable to attend. But knowing that we cannot delay the time to discuss about budget, I instead scheduled two separate meetings. One meeting to discuss the budget on February 23rd as planned, and on a second meeting, when the city solicitor became available, we would discuss about the bottled water. So we decided that on Monday, February 28th, would be the day for that second meeting. The first meeting on February 23rd, to discuss the budget went smoothly. One member of the Subcommittee did not attend. Mr. Dakota and I, and myself were the only members of the Subcommittee. And we were joined by Ms. Martin, along with school chief financial officer. So thanks to school chief financial officer, Ms. Billy Joe Turner, for giving us updates on the current year budget. And Ms. Turner also talked about Chapter 70 funding that derived from Student Opportunity Act, as well as some other grants. As of now, Ms. Turner used the governor's estimate funding as a baseline to prepare for the next school year, which is the 2022, 2023 school year budget. And this baseline budget was utilized, so that every school principal would start making their budget. Mr. Mayor, for this first portion of this Finance Subcommittee meeting, I would like to ask to accept it as the report of progress.
Any other comments? Need a motion to accept as a report of progress by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Rossi. Motion is approved.
And the second part of the meeting, that, the meeting.
I thought you were done.
So that was the first part of the meeting.
Okay.
And the second part of the meeting, we, that we rescheduled to, to Monday, February 28th, to discuss about the information on bottled water. That did not take place either. Prior to this scheduled meeting date, meeting time, actually, on February 28th, I was informed that the city solicitor made a request to cancel the meeting. So I canceled it. That was why this meeting did not take place. So after everyone had the opportunity to discuss, I believe that the acquiring bottled water information for, for the students is no longer a subject of question. So I like to close that discussion.
Okay.
So I like to make a motion that we close the discussion pertaining to acquiring bottled water for students. I'd like to ask my colleague to second it, so we can close that.
Second by Mr. Dakota. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We need to roll call on this one. Okay. Roll call, please. Second. Ms. Doherty?
I think, Your Honor, I'm not voting to close that issue. I wasn't aware that it had been resolved. I thought that the, we're still working it out with the auditor and the city solicitor in terms of moving forward, and what were things that maybe could have been done differently for next time. And I certainly don't want to correct my colleague, but I do have a different perception. We had, this was on the agenda for a, the full meeting, and we had moved it to the Finance Subcommittee meeting. We had the speakers, the auditor, and the city solicitor were here. As you know, we sent the whole thing to Finance, and it was my understanding that they were going to be at the Finance meeting, which was originally scheduled, Mr. Lay has the dates better, and has said February 17?
17 was the first.
I found out that day that the city solicitor and the auditor had not been invited to the meeting. So they were invited that day, which was short notice, less than 24 hours notice. They were unable to make it. The next week was February vacation, which is why the, the city informed us that the week of the 28th would be better. So that was put out as a date, that the, the city could be there to discuss this. I, I really, my sense was, it didn't have to be a public discussion, but it came up on the floor during one of the budget slideshows, this explanation about the water bill, which I know Councilman Leahy had some concerns from last year. So my sense is, I don't think it's really done. I don't want a formal vote to say it's done until we figure out how was it paid, and how was it resolved. It doesn't have to be a public meeting with the city solicitor. Apparently, on the 28th, the thinking was, there's more details, but they're working towards resolving it, which is why that meeting was canceled on the 28th. My understanding, I don't, I'm not privy to the conversations that Mr. Lay had, but I just don't want to close the book like this was all settled, when we still, I feel like we still had outstanding questions about it that could be resolved and provided just in a report to us. It doesn't have to be a public meeting. I'm not looking to get into a back and forth about this, but I'm relaying my understanding of the timeline, why the first meeting on the 17th was pushed to the 28th. I wasn't sure why we added a meeting on the 23rd. I was not able to make that meeting. It was a 17-minute meeting, and then the one on the 28th ended up being canceled again. But I don't think we should say we're all done until we get the final, because my goal here, especially when we're talking about the revolving fund, as you know, we are a city who gave $2 million back. Under previous administration, we had to pay $2 million back to the state. My goal is to just make sure whatever was done that could be done cleaner or more clearly for the auditor, that we get that resolved, and to not just say it's all done without that. That, that would be my hope, that we could just hold off on making any final decision with that.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on February 28th, my colleague, Ms. Doherty, had the, has the, if she believed that it need to be continued, that's fine. But I just feel that if the city solicitor wanted to continue, she would have said to postpone it and not to cancel it. When she said cancel, I mean, my understanding is, she no longer wants to talk about it. So that's why I want.
I'm going to have Ms. Mon first, and I'll go back to Ms. Doherty.
Just want to clarify, if I could.
Okay.
For Mr. Lay.
You defer to Ms. Doherty.
I'm not saying another meeting. I'm not saying we have to do another meeting. I just don't want to say the water bill is done until we get the resolution, something in writing that says, you guys worked it out. This is, this is what we learned. And again, I'm not pointing fingers. I just want to, it's not done, in my mind, because we didn't, it wasn't resolved when we canceled the meeting. I'm not looking for another meeting. I, I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can assist, you're going to discuss, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Superintendent?
You're going to discuss this, if it needs to come back as a bad bill, quote-unquote, under state law. It would come back to you by virtue of the motion put forward by Ms. Martin a year ago. All of those come back to you. I believe the request here, there's a motion on the table, is because there is a motion for this meeting, which obligates both your chair and also myself to schedule the meeting. So the motion that's on the table is to, is to pull back that requirement, which I'm also hearing from Ms. Doherty. If that, it will come back to you one way or the other, or you'll hear from us as to how it was resolved. Mr. Mayor, if that helps at all, there is a motion and a second on the table. It just alleviates the need for that Subcommittee meeting.
Okay. Ms. Mon? Okay, as recommended by Mr. Superintendent, would that be okay with you, Ms. Doherty? So could you, was that a motion that you clarified that, Madam Secretary?
So to be clear, are we just suggesting that this will not be discussed at a further Finance Subcommittee meeting? Okay.
But it could be brought on upon, if necessary, discussion.
If it comes back, it'll come back in the form of a report. Okay.
Okay. All right. So wonderful. So we already did the motion to, to accept the Subcommittee report and place on file that was passed, and then now we can do a roll call on the motion that Mr. Lay just put on the floor. Madam Secretary, just, just read.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
Okay, we go to seven reports of the Superintendent. Under the reports of Superintendent, we have 7.1, which is COVID-19 update, 7.2 budget update, 7.3 family leadership institute, 7.4 enrollment report, and at the end, we'll just do one motion to accept those reports and place on file. Now, given the situation that COVID-19 update, we have lifted our mask, maybe we can go through these reports quickly. Mr. Superintendent?
I can. The COVID update is going to continue to be there until the committee advises otherwise, but the, the biggest update there, I believe, was discussed with the Lowell High School Advisory, who provided an update on what it feels like to be out of masks currently. The 7.2, I do want to come back to that as your budget update. If I could, Mr. Mayor, given the fact that we've taken these as reports as a block, should I move through them as quickly and come back to budget update?
Absolutely, Mr. Superintendent. If you could provide a summary of the budget update. I know that the committees already have those in, in the file, in the folder, or, yes, Ms. Doherty?
Can we not continue to have the reports? They tend to be seven and 13 pages on the COVID data. Are you okay, are my colleagues okay with that? If there's a one-page update we would need, but this is seven pages. The last one was 13. I don't think we need these COVID updates every, every meeting. I think a one-pager, if something changes, that would be my request as a motion. I think Dr. Boyd likes that idea.
Sure. So.
Less trees.
So the motion is to have just one page?
Well, to have the COVID updated, if something.
Only, only if there's a change.
To get rid of this report.
Second by Mr. Dakota. Motion is passed, and we can go to, again, go into 7.2 now, Mr. Superintendent, and I understand we can do a summary, because. Mr. Superintendent, and I understand we can do a summary because everyone has the information and package already. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be continued, every meeting, you're going to get a budget update going forward. There are no immediate decisions in front of you. Our school site councils are in the midst of doing their work, as are our departments, working through their recommendations, their proposals to actualize and operationalize the budget authority that was granted by the committee at the prior meeting. Ms. Turner, we'll give you a brief update here. What did that turn out to be for schools? What are we looking at in terms of overall dollar amounts? And with that, that'll be our update for this evening. Ms. Turner?
This presentation, as the superintendent just explained, will briefly go over the total budget landscape, budget development timeline, the school-based allocations, and then the community feedback and overall next steps. The first slide that I have here is just a reminder slide. You did get this in a previous presentation. It's just another visual to show that all of our different funding sources do impact our overall strategic educational plan. At your direct direction last year, we decided to put everything in at all times. As you can see, one of the funding sources listed is the revolving account, revolving accounts. That balance always fluctuates. Prior to, three years ago, we were depleted in our revolving accounts, but now they are quite healthy. So I think your idea of work, using it to increase the quality of food service is an excellent idea. I constantly work with the state auditor to make sure that any decisions we do with the revolving account are acceptable. Prior to, as a matter of fact, anytime you spend over $5,000 in that revolving account, you have to do a request to DESI and get their approval before moving forward. So I think they would love the idea of us spending some of the revolving account balances down. Again, this is just a reminder of our overall budget landscape. The next slide is just showing you its narrative that you can read, but more or less, it's trying to, I don't know why I can't move.
Right.
Okay. It's, this slide is just showing you that the pieces that we have already done, we updated the collective bargaining amounts in our overall budget, we updated contract costs, we sought approval from you for a fair student fund in total and a supplemental amount to offer the schools. Once you approved that, we did distribute that money using your total numbers that you allowed. The rest is just going to be reflected in the next slides. Where are we right now? We did release figures to the schools last Monday, but because we are changing the way we present data to the schools, we don't want them to see ESAR dollars, Title I dollars. We want them to see it as a whole bucket of money, and then I will figure out what should go on the grant, what's eligible to go on the grant. So we changed things over the past week when we realized that we might have caused more confusion making this change. So today, we released new updated workbooks to the schools. What they're going to do now is work with their school, their school site councils and take their quips and translate them into a fiscal plan. This next spreadsheet, I'm sorry, this slide is just a summary of the impact to schools. This will also be updated in the next presentation. If you would like each of the funding source pages that the schools received today, I can include those 28 pages as an addendum for you so that you can look at each school and watch how this, their weights and their overall amounts changed. But like I said, this will change by next week. It shows you everything from last, last year and what we did this year. Again, you've seen this one before. This is just the funding source page. We have made some minor improve, not minor, I would say major improvements to increase transparency. If our three goals is making sure that we have equity, stability, the third one is transparency. With all of the feedback that we received, we ended up giving an additional column on the left-hand side showing current year weights for need-based students and next year's projected so that a school can see why their numbers might swing in any direction. The good part is that we did not allow any schools to lose on a per pupil or an overall basis. So you'll note that that is our commitment to stability so that no one sees large swings. This slide is just emphasizing how we are committed to accountability and transparency. So even though we're giving the schools the empowerment, we do have a high level of accountability. They're going through the school site council process right now. They're going to present next to central office so that we can make sure they've met all of their regulations and needs. What will happen next is the superintendent and I and some other people on the cabinet team will do teacher forums, parent forums, community forums, student forums. We're going to do finance subcommittee meetings, school committee presentations, public budget hearings, and then after we do all this, the presentations, we are asking the community to offer feedback through a survey form that they can email to us so we can get their input. Of course, as we said before, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. So there may be one or two people that had an ice, you know, an outlier request that might not have been a high-demand item. They may not get that. But people, if we see someone asking for, like, a lot of people asking for the same thing, that tells us that's what our community wants, and we'd bring that forward to you. This next slide is just another recap of where the money comes from. We've done the government, governor's budget, those numbers were released, we determined our SBB amount, we built the budgets, we've released them. Next, we'll roll them into a main budget, we'll present to the school committee, we'll update after the grant allocations are released, and then we'll do the constant review and adjustment throughout the year through transfers, as you know that we historically have done. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. No comment? Ms. Maun?
Thank you very much. I just got a question on the summary of impact to schools. I just want to make sure I'm kind of reading this right. So as I look at the FY '22, that, so that's last year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then the numbers for this year that were distributed are the FY '23, and then your final column, the reconciliation, is showing the difference between the two. So like, as I look at the Bartlet, they basically would see a reduction of 209,000. Okay.
Great question. And this is, I was making this quick, so I, but for those that like to see the, that is a great question. So this summary, I actually, because we made changes, it was confusing to the schools how they were getting the money.
I can understand.
But this spreadsheet actually showed me why it was confusing. So let's say the Bartlet.
Okay.
We said in the formula to the algorithm, no school should lose money on a per pupil or an overall basis. If you compared fair student funding from last year to fair student funding to this year, they didn't. But what we realized is last year, they not only got fair student funding, but they got ESAR, Title I, and other positions funded outside. So what we did when we worked this week to make things clearer, and this is why I said they got modified ones today, we actually went back into the algorithm and said no school should lose on an overall total budget amount, right? So the next spreadsheet you'll get next week, or the next meeting, you will not see any negatives. This just showed me who we were going to need to supplement. One, one example is this. The Pine Arks, they were, when they first saw their numbers, they had only had, they were going to get a dollar. And they're supposed to lose 450,000 if you look on an equity basis, but because the superintendent is committed to no school being harmed, we would have, they would have shown a negative 450, but we would have supplemented that with 450 so that they see no change at all. You'll see that in the updated spreadsheet that built off of what we got today. So no, nobody will lose.
So like, as I look at the Pine on this one, it's showing 172, and you're just using an updated number of 400, whatever.
Right, exactly. So then they would have, we say the 172, we would have supplemented in a budget exception so it would zero out. That's not reflected here, the updated spreadsheets that you're going to get based on what we've released today will show you exact, it's, what we're trying to do is show you when schools have that stability cost of, here's the schools that would have lost money, but we supplemented them so they didn't lose money. So that they're aware that you're not getting additional funds because you should have lost money, but we're coming in to stop that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comment, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, I have a question. So when I look at the list of schools, there are schools I don't see here, like the Le Blanc, the Cardinal Connell, the Career Academy, and I, so I want to know, are those, where they are?
Okay, so I can present that in a separate thing, but if I put that here, they are different. The specialty schools would, if we ran it, they would not have enough money to support their schools, some of them, and others that are high specialty may be 50,000 a student. So if we put that in, it could eat up all the money. So what we did is we, they're part of the total pool, but we don't run them through the formula, like, we keep them separate and then we supplement them. They'll meet with Mr. Skinner and myself if they have other needs or if there are other concerns.
Then I would like to see those schools separated out because I understand they have, they're vulnerable populations that do have higher needs. And I'll tell you one that just jumps out at me right now, based on the decision we made recently to change our retention and attendance policies because we have 3,400 students set to fail or be retained. I think the Career Academy is going to be one that we're going to see a population increase over there. So I would be interested in seeing how we're supporting those schools. I'm not looking to spend, you know, a whole bucket of money that we don't have, but we do have to meet the needs of all our students, and we are looking at unprecedented times in terms of students not attending, students not engaging in their coursework, and these programs are where we provide those resources.
I most certainly can have that as a separate slide on next, on the next meeting so that you can see them. They were also held harmless so that they could at least get everything that they received last year. So they would not lose, even if they see an enrollment decline, we don't allow people to lose any of the staff that they had. Now, just so you know, the decisions we've made as far as increasing tutor costs by 33%, increase in, you know, all of the increases that we've seen do make the cost of these positions go up. So let's say if we held someone harmless, 1 million to 1 million, that 1 million may not buy the same thing, but we would come in with a budget exception because the superintendent was committed to no one loses anything, right? So we will go in and adjust that. And the other thing is, just based on your example that you shared right now, Mr. Skinner and I already met with the Career Academy leader today, and we, we're going to meet with her, we're scheduling a meeting for Tuesday so that we can hear what her concerns are. The attendance fluctuates so much, so it's not, I'm not the attendance, the enrollment fluctuates so much that it's, it's not easy like in, you know, Lowell High where we can say they have 4,000 students. So we are going to meet with her and hear her individual needs and do what we can.
Ms. Doherty, go ahead.
One follow-up question. So with the Le Blanc was another one that I mentioned, that the enrollment may be increasing in that area because of the therapeutic aspect and because many of our kids are struggling with that as well. My last question, and really maybe it's kind of a comment, question, request regarding the community engagement piece, I don't know if the plan was to do all the same webinar approaches that have been done in the past when we were in the middle of a pandemic. I can tell you as someone who participated in those webinars and talked to other family and staff, they're not as engaging. It's kind of like you're lecturing at people, and even though there is the chat you can put, it's just, I think if you are planning on doing, taking it on the road, going to different schools throughout the district, I think that would have more engagement from the community. That would be my request.
Well, I can assure you that we're doing that as well, as the superintendent did too, in-person. He's doing each school. We're breaking this up in a team approach. Those schools that we think may have more difficult conversations, we both go. So we did the Pine, he did the Maury. So we do have a schedule for the next couple of weeks to do that, in addition to the Zoom for those that may not be able to see it in person. And another thing I wanted to point out to you, and I keep forgetting as I answer your questions, the most important piece here is that all of the concerns you're bringing up with the smaller schools, if their enrollment does indeed increase, the one thing we're doing differently this year, now that we had more time to get into fair student funding, is to do the fall reconciliation piece. So we want to hold a budget aside so that in September or October, we can look at the numbers again and make sure. We will not hurt any school that did not get as many kids because they've already hired who they needed to hire. So if they had significantly less students, we're still not going to take anything. But those schools that have a sizable increase, we're definitely going to make them right in the fall. Now, of course, we could say we could do it several times throughout the year, but we don't have that type of money. So at least if we do a fall reconciliation, we can address the issues your voice and now.
Any other comment? Okay, thank you for that report. We'll now go to 7.3, Family Leadership Institute. I believe this might be best referred to a subcommittee. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I would recommend that this is referred to the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee. I believe Committee Member Del Rossi is the chair of that subcommittee.
Need a motion to refer the subcommittee by Ms. Maun, second by Ms. Thompson. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. 7.4 is the enrollment report. I understand it might be a quick summary. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This is the monthly report that the committee receives on enrollment. We submit this report as a report of progress. If there's any questions, Ms. Phillips is available.
Any comment? Here, none. Ms. Doherty?
I would just ask that we include that same information that you provided for my follow-up, where we can start to see, when did people initiate enrollment? And, you know, where are they in the process, and just when they're attending? And I know you'll be getting that information easier after we make some changes, but at least going forward, I think it's helpful to see. Thank you.
Okay, no other comment? Need a motion to accept the report of the superintendent, 7.1 through 7.4, as reports of progress by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Rossi. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We go to eight new business, 8.1, 2022, 2023 school calendar that's been tabled, so it's off the agenda for tonight. 8.2, consider, need a motion to approve the MOA for recruitment stipend. Any comments on 8.2? Hang on, no other comments? We're gonna, Mr. Dakota?
I'm sorry, did I misspotted this conversation? Did we approve 8.1? Because I have questions about that.
We didn't do the school calendar.
Let's tape that, 8.1, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. My recommendation to the mayor was that we tabled this item. It's collaboration with UTL. They've asked for a little bit more time to collaborate. The upside here is you are, the public can see what we're, what we're considering, and the committee can see in public what we're considering. So I think tabling it to the right direction, typically you approve it in March. However, it is for public view now, you can approve it in April, and I think respecting UTL's request for further discussion is appropriate. So my recommendation is to table it.
Thank you. So it's just withdrawn on this agenda, and we'll take it up when it's on the agenda next time. 8.2, consideration of MOA for recruitment stipends. Any comment? Ms. Maun?
Thank you. Just curious, so the way this is broken down with the individual teachers who'd be part of this effort, do we have an overall budget for this?
Dr. Hall?
Presently, Ms. Martin, there isn't money set aside for these trips. If we did out-of-state travel, we'd certainly bring it back to the committee, but we wanted to be prepared should we identify out-of-state job fairs that we could go to and have a plan to be able to compensate people if it involved travel on weekends or work after school hours to participate in virtual fairs or other recruitment.
Okay, so this is just, so this, we'd be approving this as an MOU regarding the stipends that would be paid, but we'd expect to be getting a full budget for this effort? That would include travel expenses and everything altogether. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Before we move forward. Thank you.
Any other comment? Need a motion for the recruitment stipend by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please. It's not working. You take mine for now.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We share a microphone for the moment. 8.3, permission to post director of mental health behavior, SEL. Any comment on this one? Here, no comment in a motion to post the director of men, Mr. Dakota?
Don't we have someone in that capacity? Don't we have someone in that capacity now?
No, we have a coordinator. This is an external grant for a specific around mental health. The SEL coordinator works around our curriculum programming, around social emotional learning. This is more around the therapeutic needs around mental and behavioral health. This is externally grant-funded for these specific purposes. Ms. Desmond can provide further description, further summary of the overall use of these funds, where the funds are coming from, and how it'll support children, if you'd like, Mr. Dakota, but that's the brief summary.
Can I follow up on that? So is this a grant-funded position that we're trying to get? And how long is this going to be provided?
Ms. Desmond?
Thank you, Mayor and School Committee. This actually is very exciting news. The state released a new grant in November that a team from the Office of Teaching and Learning put together. The team consisted of Carolyn Rochelo, Lauren Campion, and Lindsay Kilale. The grant was very competitive. It was specific to three components. One component was assessing mental health using a mental health screener. The other component was the development of multi-tiered systems of support for mental health. And then the third component of the grant was being able to provide sustainability through community-based supports. And it actually is in alignment with what many of the committee members have talked about for quite a while, based on the state of our students' mental health. So this grant is a $300,000 a year grant. We can reapply for up to three years to sustain these positions. And what this enables us to do is actually build out mental health supports, screeners. It provides funding for teams to develop tier-two, tier-three interventions. So one step in this process is to create these positions. I know Dr. Hall worked with LSAA to get them, to approve them within their scales, their pay scales. And what we will be able to do, hopefully, if this is approved tonight, is put these, post these jobs. We require licensing so that hopefully we will get licensed clinicians in these positions. One position is the director position. The other position is a student support position, which will be able to go out and help schools implement a screener, look at the data, and lead professional development in the areas of tier-two and tier-three instruction. I'm sorry, intervention. It will also provide us the funding. We've already put out the RFP for community-based organization to be able to support the access to services for our students that would occur outside of the school day. It is really challenging for families to access those services. I'm hearing that they're on wait lists, et cetera. So we're hopeful that this RFP will produce some community-based organizations that are going to be willing to work with us to be able to provide greater access to our students. So it's a really exciting opportunity for us. And as I said, if we can put in place what we have said we would like to put in place, then we are really hopeful that we will continue to be funded for the next three years.
Mr. Dakota, are you done?
Well, I'm just hoping that it's not going to adversely affect who we already have in place for that, for this?
No, the hope is to build out a bigger team, a larger team, to support our students in a greater way.
Right.
And our social workers at our schools and our guidance counselors as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Doherty and Mr. Rossi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm thrilled to see these positions. And I would just add that we had a motion, I had a motion back in December 1st, asking for a mental health service delivery audit. I think we need to get back to that as soon as possible, because I, in reference to my colleagues' concern about how does it fit together to have an organizational chart that clearly explains the new social workers coming in, what's going to be the supports for them, what's going to be the professional development supports for our staff, how does it all align? I think, you know, having that audit happening as we're making these decisions would be very helpful. The both roles seem definitely something we need, and I'm excited about it. I know that I'm hearing not only are community-based organizations putting people on wait lists for mental health services, they're not accepting new patients. So we really need to build this system within to provide those services, to deliver those services to our students, and to help our staff, because they're all experiencing the same anxiety and stress that everyone has through the pandemic, and then going to school and trying to teach students who are facing trauma and concern. So I think this is a really good piece, but I would ask that we do move quickly with getting someone to do that mental health services delivery audit for us, to provide that outside expertise in helping us shape and grow this department. And then the only other thing I want to say is, you notice that it's reporting to the chief academic officer. I think that's a lot. Again, I'm going to go back to the whole org chart, that we went from three assistant superintendents to five, but we seem to have uploaded a lot in some areas. And I do think that's an area of concern, but I am very excited about this opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
Sorry about that. I guess my concern is that you're hiring directors, mental health, and a director for mental health behavior SEL. And what we need is more staff on the ground floor with our students, because our students are in major crisis. And so I don't know how the SEL coordinator is being utilized now, but I, I mean, I can tell you from personal experience, like, my son's on a wait list, you know? And it's been a long time. And, you know, what are these people going to do? How are they going to be able to move things up in comparison to what the SEL director's doing now? So what's the major key component differences, I guess?
Thank you, Ms. Del Rossi. So Ms. Desmond can provide further details, but I believe it was prior to this new committee taking hold, prior to the holidays, prior to election, there was an additional investment of $3 million in school-based social workers and school-based mental health staff. Unfortunately, due to the staffing shortfalls and the staffing shortages across the country and across industries, many of those positions have not yet been filled, even though they've been posted and recruited. So some of what you're hearing from Ms. Desmond is a realignment through additional external dollars for how we can re-envision those services so they meet the needs of kids. You currently, and those positions are still posted, they're still available. One of the things for our schools to hire currently, the other addition that we've made, and if you may recall from the March 2nd School Committee meeting, we now have provided flexibility where those dollars are now available within schools, but the flexibility there is they have now, what Ms. Turner was referencing, it's a mental health supplement. So what they have is a mental and behavioral health supplement, so that they can think through those dollars differently. If there's a shortage of social workers nationwide, the school site councils can think through for school-based staff. They all have that additional supplement on top of the dollars that they've already received to address those with direct services within schools. So this is not in place of, this is actually in addition to, a significant additional investment in school site services. The wait lists are certain, are real. And, but unfortunately, with added investments of dollars, those only help our students if we can translate those into services. And within our industry, where it's people-based, it's face-to-face services, those services, that staff has not been available for hire. So that's what you heard with Ms. Desmond saying, trying to realign, rethink through additional investment here. And because of our approach, and credit to Ms. Desmond and our academic team, because of our approach and our thinking differently about these services, we're being awarded additional competitive dollars here for us to implement that re-envisioning of how we provide those services. But the funding will stay. That's the committee's commitment. That's our commitment to our schools. So the funding is there. It's available. Every school that currently has one of, has those vacancies, they're not going anywhere. If they can hire those vacancies now and fill those vacancies, they'll be able to. And they'll be able to retain those services and that direct support in schools next year, because that funding commitment has been authorized already by the committee in March for next year as well.
Just to clarify, so with this and the grant, will it give more access to service providers? So like, maybe they could connect even if it's not in Massachusetts, but they could do a Zoom? Do they come with more resources than we currently have? And would that, is that the benefit, I guess, is my question?
Ms. Desmond, can you provide greater detail?
Sure. So these positions for mental health supports are one facet of the grant. So the grant is $300,000 annually. And so what the grant is also providing us is, as I mentioned, the RFP, allowing us to pay for supports through an RFP process to establish a partnership with a mental health provider. So that's where we hopefully will be able to offer additional access for our children, or for our families, I should say, to partner with a mental health provider. So if you're, say you're a parent and you are trying to access mental health supports outside of the school day, and you're on a wait list, hopefully this will be another option for you so that you can get quicker services for your child. We're also being able to fund additional work with Elevate New England, who provides youth mentoring to our students as a tier-two support. This grant is also providing us funding to be able to allow our teachers at the school level to work with the social worker and other supports to develop tier-two and tier-three mental health interventions. It's also providing us funding so that we can, you know, purchase a screener, a mental health screener, which we haven't had. It's also providing us funding to add a social-emotional panel to Aspen, so that we can start gathering data on how we are supporting students in the schools, so that we can actually get reports on how we are providing social, emotional, and mental health supports in schools. So this grant actually is providing us with a lot of things that many of you have mentioned in earlier meetings, the need for. And they've been heard, and we were fortunate to be able to develop a really well-written grant that was competitive and approved with the state. So we are really hopeful that if we can implement all of these things this year, it's a tight timeline, that we will continue to be funded for the next three years.
Ms. Del Rossi, are you done?
I guess, so the, when you say mental health screener, I know there are a lot of issues with the whole DESA system, and a lot of teachers had a lot of issues with that. What's the difference with the DESA system as compared to whatever new social, emotional, or mental health screening that there will be? And how many questions will it be? Because teachers are stressed about those things, I know firsthand.
Right. So the mental health screener would actually be at a different level. That would be more with the social worker and the mental health district support specialist. That is a different level of screening. That's when children are in need of mental health supports. So I think, you know, we're talking about some different things here. Social-emotional learning is tier-one curriculum that we have implemented over the last couple of years through our coordinator, K-28. We're working on implementing Wonder at the high school. That is different work than intervening with mental health crisis. So I think we're talking about some different things here. And we are hoping with this grant and some of the things that we're doing through the budgeting process, as Dr. Boyd has mentioned, that we'll have a more comprehensive support structure for our students in need, and our staff in need, actually, as well. So, you know, this is one more step to getting to that.
So it's in response, basically, to the major mental health crises that we've experienced this year at all the different schools? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
I guess my question is more about the org chart, and this kind of goes back to Ms. Doherty's question. I'm curious as to why, or is this going to be tucked under the academic portion of the org chart? Because it seems like it fits under the equity, it's more of an equity hire, and that fits under the kind of Ms. Phillips' purview of the CLSP. So I'm just curious about where it falls.
Yes, it's within, it's within our chief academic office.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is an additional grant for $300,000. So it makes sense to find some way to use it. If we don't use it, we lose that $300,000. So I want to support it. But could you put cherry on top of this cake by telling me, is it going to support the tele support, like telehealth support?
So the RFP is for partnership with community agency. So the, there is a telehealth agency that has applied through the RFP. So we're in the process of looking at the applicants now. There's a rubric and a criteria, and the team has to go through that process to determine who is the community provider.
Great, thank you. I will support.
Okay, here, no other comment. Need a motion to post the director of mental health behavioral SEL, move. Roll call, please. Second by Ms. Doherty.
I thought.
Somebody said that. Somebody said move. I thought you heard them. So Mr. Lay, you moved it? Okay, Mr. Lay, move.
Sure.
Second by Ms. Doherty. Any back and say, we need to put one moving. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty? Yes. Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
8.4, permission to post mental health behavior SEL district support specialist, District Y. Ms. Doherty? Okay, you're gonna just motion to accept it. Second by Mr. Dakota. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
8.5, need a motion to approve the budget transfer of $1,726,121.26 by Mr. Rossi, second by Mr. Dakota. No comment. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, we got 8.6 through 8.16 are the votes to authorize MSBA statement of interest to different schools through the district. I need a motion to bundle by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Dakota. I'm gonna read each one, and then we'll do a roll call at the end for each vote, to represent each vote. 8.6, vote authorize MSBA statement of interest for the John Shaughnessy Elementary School under the Accelerated Repair Program. 8.7, vote authorize MSBA statement of interest for the Abraham Lincoln Elementary School under the Accelerated Repair Program. 8.8, vote authorize MSBA statement of interest for the Bartlett School Partnership School under the Accelerated Repair Program. 8.9, vote authorize MSBA statement of interest for the Benjamin F. Butler Middle School under the Accelerated Repair Program. 8.10, vote authorize MSBA statement of interest for the Cardinal, O'Connell Early Learning Center under the Accelerated Repair Program. 8.11, vote authorize MSBA statement of interest for the Henry J. Robinson Middle School under the Accelerated Repair Program. 8.12, vote authorize MSBA statement of interest for the Frederick T. Greenhodge Elementary School under the Accelerated Repair Program. 8.13, vote authorize MSBA statement of interest for the Joseph A. McAvoy Elementary School under the Accelerated Repair Program. 8.14, vote authorize MSBA statement of interest for the James Daly Middle School under the Accelerated Repair Program. Middle School under the accelerated repair program. Eight point fifteen, vote authorize M S B A statement of interest for the Charlotte Merlin Elementary School under the accelerated repair program. Eight point sixteen, vote authorize M S B A statement of interest for the STEM Academy at Rogers School under the accelerated repair program. No other comments, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Nine, communication. It's nine point one, nine point two, nine point three. We discussed, uh, nine point two already. Um, any comments on any of the, uh, report, Mr. Superintendent or the school committee members? If none, need a motion to bundle, to accept the communications and to place them on file by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Martin. All, all in favor of the I, post say no, the I's have it, motions is carry. Ten, adjournment, motion by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms.
May I, very quick?
Sure.
Right near your podium is a box of books that, um, someone, George Zahrulis and his friends wanted you, uh, to have so you can pass to, uh, to your city council members.
Oh, wonderful, thank you so much.
Those are books from, for veterans. Yes.
These are the books from where, Mr. Lay?
Uh, those books are from, uh, Mr. George Zahrulis and his friends.
This is stuck together. I'm gonna show this on TV. This is a book, Vietnam War, 50th Commemoration, A Time to Honor, Stories of Service Duty and Sacrifice. Thank you so much. Please let the author know, Mr. Zahrulis know. Thank you so much. And the adjournment, oh, one more comment, Mr. Dakota?
Uh, yeah, just a quick announcement before we adjourn. I would like to announce to the public that, um, there's a performance of Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory at the Wang School on Friday and Saturday. Uh, I've been in their rehearsals. It's going to be a terrific presentation. I recommend it to everyone, uh, in, in support of our kiddos. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. On that same note, I would like to remind the community that we are in Knowledge Bowl season and the final, uh, Knowledge Bowl competition will be Monday, March 21st at the, uh, Butler School, beginning at 5:30. It's a great event and I, I know that L T C is going to be, uh, filming it. I would make the request that we ask, we get some edited version that can be presented. Remember how we used to do it when we had, we had our own TV studio at the high school that was fully operating? I know they've been understaffed for years, but they would do snippets of the event. It was always fun and we'll, we'll, I'm sure we'll have the students, the winning team invited, but as far as I'm concerned, everyone who participates is a winner. So, oh yes, tomorrow night is the last semifinal at the Butler School. Monday is the finals and that is the one that I would like to have them edit the broadcast so that we can share it at our next school committee meeting, but thank you all.
Mr. Lay, anymore?
Oh yeah, I was about to add about tomorrow's, uh, competition.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty is always there at the Knowledge Bowl, so she's a big fan of the Knowledge Bowl and she even bought some balloons for the kids yesterday, so, uh, good job.
Since we're a topic, uh, announcement, I made announcement yesterday for the joint efforts of the mayor's office, the city manager's office, the school council, the school committee, and the, uh, nonprofits partnership to do the fundraising for the fighting Maude Street. And I've been in communication, uh, with, uh, Ms. Martin to, uh, C T I who helped set up the, the fund. Um, I'd rather have you, uh, make the announcement, if you couldn't, uh, announce the, the fundraising, because I did this yesterday on the council side, if you don't mind explaining a little bit for the people out there that could, um, help contribute a little bit.
Sure, absolutely. Um, you, the mayor's office had taken it on as a, as a fundraising effort to support, uh, the families who were impacted by the, the Maude Street fire. Um, there have been, um, upwards of, of seventeen families that were impacted. Uh, they have been working, certainly with community teamwork, with a number of other strong community partners. Um, the, the group of, of organizations that are working with these families, uh, have been meeting so that we're coordinating those efforts. Um, and to the mayor's point, he did launch a fundraising effort. Uh, it is, uh, you can access it from the community teamwork, uh, website and that's comteam.org, C O M M T E A M dot org. It's right on our, the, the landing page as you, as you get there. Uh, we've been seeing really strong community support, which has been incredibly, um, you know, inspiring and, and working with these families. It's, we know how very much appreciated it is by them as they try to rebuild after such a, such a tragedy. So for anyone who's interested, comteam.org. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for leading the effort.
Thank you. A ten adjournment, motion by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Rossi, on favor of the I, post say no, the I's have it, motion is carry. Thank you.